This is technical, Jai.
Yes, take it back.
Talk to our people.
Take it back, action. We are taking back Nigeria. If you don't believe it, you better start believing now. We are taking back Nigeria for sure.
Yes.
You know, we respect Bouharé, he's a good guy, or it's time for him to retire. So we're gonna give him a befitting retirement.
And not only Bouharé, because there's other ones, you know.
Anatiko, we have to persecute Anatiko, for sure, we have to persecute him. You know, so get your PVC, you know, we're working harder in diaspora to raise funds, to send back home, you know, so that you guys can buy posters and all that. But with all that said, get your PVC, believe in AAC, this is gonna happen. Thank you.
Take it back.
Take it back.
Seven people.
But some people are supposed to be, you know, respecting more head counts. Maybe the snow was just an obstacle, probably.
It's snowing here today, yeah?
Yeah, so, um...
They're like, they're like, "Shore, any tiny snow."
I'm walking around everywhere with snow.
It's actually a blessing, because, you know, it hasn't, it hasn't snowed in a long time.
Wow.
It hasn't snowed in a long time, and here it is, so...
White Christmas, everybody thinks we're gonna have a white Christmas.
White Christmas, so, but I, I wish we don't.
Come on.
That's my honest opinion. I wish we don't. I want this, it looks like this winter is gonna be one of those, uh, will have less snow, but more cold.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's like thirty, something, thirty degrees in Texas, you know, we are causing trouble.
Are you serious?
Yes.
How are you?
Very good.
Summer winner.
Oh, yes, that's a miss you.
That's a miss you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
No problem. I came from Nigeria yesterday. I had to be here today. It's been a lot of travel, but it's been good.
Fundraising year, so.
Thanks, thank you.
We're looking for a speech.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Questions.
I'm looking forward to it, too.
I think I have the idea, I have to go.
Sir, you wanna talk to our people?
Thank you for what you do, and it's good to, uh, to stay motivated and, uh...
Thank you.
Come on.
This is only fun, I think, making communications, so...
No, I just wanted to...
Alright, thank you so much.
I had a chance to listen to what you have to say, so it makes a lot of sense.
Thank you, thank you.
Mrs. Talojai, right?
Yes. I was like, she doesn't...
How are you?
I just, I just had a very good dream.
Thank you.
How are you doing?
Very good, very good.
Hi, yes, woman.
Nice to be here. Do you all right?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, stop that last name. Oh, you wanna say something?
No, no, okay, okay, hey. Royal Affairs, take it back.
Action.
We'll bring it home, we'll bring it home. Oh man, it's a lot of work. Mr. John, to do London last week, yeah?
Let me, let me do it.
Clement, what are you wearing?
Anything I wanna wear.
Thank you. I'll keep my friends, I'll make it as sensible as Secret Services. Yeah.
So, have you been to Minnesota before?
Yes, I have.
Why?
I thought this was where we passed when we were going to Edmonton.
Edmonton, okay.
Yeah.
Saint Paul?
No.
Are you sure?
This was, uh, this was, this was a transit point.
I always go through here, it's always slow.
But there was a time I came here, years ago, I was giving a talk in a place called Marshall.
Marshall, okay, yeah, yeah.
I drove three hours.
Yeah, it is.
It was the first time I found out that America is not one single country.
No.
Because what they were saying on the radio shows.
Yeah.
These different countries.
It was really wack.
Yeah, yeah, usually, and this goes across every state, city, major cities, so, the inner cities is what, you know, the, the, the media always likes to show. So, but once you go beyond the inner city.
There's something else.
It is just, you know, like, my first time ever going beyond the inner city, going down a country. I was like, my goodness, this looks like my village.
How are you doing?
How are you, man?
How are you? Mmm, we are paying for you.
Thank you, thank you.
You get this.
Thank you, man.
In Jesus' name.
Alright, thank you.
You are welcome, but you are late.
We was, uh, my people.
Because you have been here since five, something.
It helped me to ransom, they helped me.
I like...
The organizers. I guess we're waiting for more participants, that's our concept. No, no problem, man.
Mommy, you want to say something to our viewers?
Ah, hey, Nigeria, it's about time.
Yes.
Take it back.
That's right.
And by God's grace, we take our country back.
Yes.
From the analog.
People.
People.
Yes.
And God will help us.
Amen.
So, we are not alone.
Everybody.
God has sat upon it, and we shall be so in Jesus' name.
Alright.
Okay.
I'm gonna put my prayer request here.
Oh, put it back. It has been sat upon, put it here, take it back, we're taking our country back.
Take it back, swear.
Take it back.
My brother.
The company was wrapping this for dancing.
That's what it's funny, yeah, so, everything here is all good.
It's our five minutes.
Yes. I'll take a good one, too.
Sorry, lady, yes. Okay, you got, you got the jury. Okay, so, lead them, so, Iron Lady already knows the jury, so...
Stop calling me Iron Lady.
And I introduce it.
That's two.
Very good, three nice ones.
Okay, see what I mean? Take it back. Do you really wanna take it back?
So that they call it twin cities.
Yeah.
Because the two biggest cities, they're just facing each other.
Yes, okay.
It was divided by earlier.
Yeah, yeah, so if you go to places like, uh, with the northern side of, uh, St. Paul, go to one of those towers.
Yes.
You can, you can literally see the two cities looking at each other.
Wow, sure.
Why they call it twin cities, yeah.
Hey, we showed up.
They're just fifty minutes away from each other.
Yes, man.
That's interesting.
Yeah, so... So yeah, like I was saying, once you go beyond that inner city.
Oh, yeah.
Which is where you have all the, you know, the skyscraper building, once you go beyond that and the suburbs.
Remember when you go beyond the concrete jungles?
The rest is just farms and, you know, country.
I drove, I rented a car, drove to Marshall for two hours.
For me, like, you are going to Minneapolis, where are you guys?
Uh, we're right here, we're right here by Lake Street in Minneapolis. You know, the best place to be at this time, because...
I think she's asking for address.
Oh, what's the address?
Oh, the address is eight ten, eight one zero.
Your address.
Eight one zero West Thirty First Street.
Has it named, Regent's?
Regent Assembly.
Assembly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The church. Oh, I thought it was like a name.
Regent's Assembly, Regent's Assembly.
West Thirty First Street, Minneapolis?
Thirty First Street, yes.
Minneapolis?
Yes, Minneapolis. I think, um...
Uh, zip code, please.
Zip code would be, give me a moment, I don't have that offhand. I'll just get you that real quick.
What's it called, Regent's Assembly?
This place is a lot of APC supporters.
In Minneapolis?
Exactly, you know, exactly, some those rhythm guys.
Alright.
They so support, uh, because of...
Okay, we got some.
So usually when you map it. Usually when you map it, it will automatically append a zip code to the address, so, um...
They will, if you just have the address, they will find the zip.
Yeah, it will find the zip.
Are we good?
Thank you, man.
How are you?
You're leaving?
No, no.
We're here for change.
Thanks.
Change. Change of the day. So the zip code is five five four zero eight?
I don't think it's a link, meaning...
Uh, yeah, it doesn't, the address, the street address is one matter, so, the rest would just...
Where did he go?
He's in there.
I'm sorry.
God damn it.
Cold?
I have weakness.
One, sacrifice. We are not going to be able to develop Nigeria if there's no sacrifice. Sometimes I've been terribly, I feel concerned, I feel a little ambivalent, because I'm here for a very long time, and I wish I could make some changes, or there are, make some contribution. So, to conclude, I would just say that sacrifice is very, very important. If anyone is trying to sacrifice, nobody's going to change Nigeria, of course. Literally, nobody's going to change Nigeria. And then finally, I would say, I would just conclude by saying that, uh, intellectually, I'm very pessimistic, but I'm optimistic in my heart. I'm, I have some optimism in my heart. But if you look at it intellectually, you know what is happening in Nigeria sometimes, it's very, very pessimistic. Because the people who are the people who are pious, who want to make a difference, it's not to think seriously about it. My hope is that, through social movement, such as the one that is taking place here, is going to do something. If we can come together and forget about our differences, we, let's forget, in the sense, let's forget, because we recognize our differences, but find common ground, establish, establish common ground. I will tell everybody, if I have, if I had a dream, and I truly want to be a terrible part, because you are equal, you are, you're somebody, you're expected, I will return to that, before they can. So, let's think very deeply, and just think about the legacy we're going to leave behind for the younger generation. I don't know, this is why I just come to live here in the United States and just kind of have a job and be, and retire, and just keep suffering in Nigeria, even though, even in the US, you have to be very careful, because social security is no... Okay, thank you very much.
Well, let's give Professor Zamanga another round of applause. Thank you so much, Professor, for your wisdom and understanding. May God continue to strengthen you. You are a blessing to us, you are a blessing to Nigeria. And the next item on the agenda is, uh, to bring in our convener. Omoyele Shoré is here with us tonight, and I wanna give a brief introduction of Omoyele Shoré. Omoyele is a Nigerian human rights activist and pro-democratic campaigner, founder of Sahara Reporters, you know, we are all familiar with Sahara Reporters, as Shoré is the humble founder of Sahara Reporters. And is also a presidential candidate, you know, for African Action Congress in Nigeria. You know, he is the single threat, you know, to President Bouharé and Anatiko in this upcoming election. A wonderful one is, uh, behind us here, let us welcome, Mr. Omoyele Shoré. AAC.
AAC.
Take it back.
Take it back.
Action.
AAC.
Take it back.
Take it back.
Action.
AAC.
Take it back.
Take it back.
Action.
That's all you can do, really? AAC.
Take it back.
Take it back.
Action.
Louder, guys, AAC.
Take it back.
Take it back.
Action.
AAC.
Take it back.
Take it back.
Action.
AAC.
Take it back.
Take it back.
Action.
AAC.
Take it back.
How are you, man?
I am, I am, AC, C, A, E, N, no, it's A, A, C, who knows what that stands for? Thank you.
Oh, what a wise woman.
Thank you.
African Action Congress.
You got the Iron Lady in the house.
African Action Congress. I would like to go deeper, but I won't. Some people were asking questions like, what does African action has to do with Nigeria? Because they didn't think that the man had a death toll to him, but he didn't. I don't know the whole story, but I've heard it many times, so I'm not gonna tell the story, I'm gonna let the convener tell the story. But I just wanna do, do justice, if I may. May I? May I? First of all, good evening, everybody. I, uh, I'm gonna keep it short, because we wanna get right to the point. Thank you for coming, your time is precious, we don't take it for granted. I surely hope we don't, because if you're here, it means you are conscious and you have faith. And faith. If you bury it, eleven levels says, is a substance of things hoped for, evidence of things.
Not seen.
Yet to be seen. I truly believe that. And I don't wanna be dramatic, but allow me to tell you that there's history in the making, isn't it? And if you don't believe it, I believe it, because you're here. And you know what else I believe in? I believe in a man of integrity. If you know what integrity looks like, it's that person that that you can trust with your life, your children's life. And that's who Shoré is. At least from the people I've gotten to know in a very short time, like Kana Kala Jai. He's always very shy, but he's a giant at heart. I've gotten to know him very soon. Then there's Dejako Malafé. Well-respected, well-respectful people in the communities. The story of Abadetji likes to tell, I'm gonna steal it from him. He was my mentor, he was the first person I met when I came from Kibera. And I heard that this man was gonna put his life on the line, what he's been doing for thirty good years. And I say thirty good years. And then, Abadetji would tell the story that if it wasn't for him, he would be a millionaire. If it wasn't for the cause that they had together that changed his ways. So, without further ado, I'm thanking you guys for being here to welcome him. The man that can actually do something for us. And I took, I believe a wise man says, when duty calls, though, they must let the young men say, yes, I can. And that's what I've seen. With this man, we did some amazing things in Sokal and Norkal. But Omoyele Shoré is the one to help us go back home. I wanna go back home. I heard someone said, me too. I want people to go back home. I have three kids, and I sometimes wonder, sometimes the gibberish of things, the jergens, oh, I don't wanna go into that, the jitters, the, the things that makes us hurt. So I believe in this man tonight. There's so many things. Did I touch somebody's heart? It means, in English, or, uh, orokonu rekobo, my dad used to say, there's no way you can translate sometime in your writing to correct English, grammar. There's a million tales, am I, am I close? A million tales in one, in one, in a book of cobol. What is cobol in English? A penny?
Yes.
Thank you. I wanna make sure I get it right, because I see a lot of intelligent people here. So without further ado, when I think about that, the only thing I remember is that there's something wrong with us, but Shoré would say, whatever is wrong with us, it's about to be right with us. I would like to introduce the convener of AAC, African Action Congress, because it's not just about Nigeria, it's about our heritage. And he's here, and he's got more to be said that will bring us to the understanding that this can happen and will happen. But he can't do it alone. He can't do it alone. Please help me welcome, with a greater promise, Omoyele Shoré.
Thank you so much, Clement, and good evening to everyone here, present. Let me apologize for coming late. It had nothing to do with, we had something to do with organizers who kidnapped me, kept me somewhere, because I have no sense of time right now. I, last weekend, we're in the United Kingdom, and I had to fly to Nigeria, and flew from Nigeria to the US yesterday morning. And by today, I'm here with you in Minneapolis, for one reason and one reason only, so that Nigeria can get it right. It's, uh, the most important year in our life, it will be next year, the life of Nigeria, as, uh, twenty nineteen. It's important, because it will be twenty years since the advent of the current democratic experiment in Nigeria. It was in nineteen ninety-nine that Nigeria returned to democratic rule, what is known as a fourth republic. Since then, we've had several presidents, democratically elected, or sometimes selected, depending on which cycle of election you are looking at. And we've had the same old people, same set of people, same set of families run Nigeria the way they like. And as a result, a lot of our people, a lot of our people have been left behind. And those who have been left behind, left Nigeria behind. And the ones that left Nigeria behind, the some of you that are sitting right here with us today. Uh, but the interesting thing about Nigeria is that you can leave Nigeria behind, but Nigeria will never leave you alone. Wherever you run, Nigeria will find you. This is my experience traveling around the world, spreading the message of the recovery of Nigeria from those who have taken Nigeria by the jugular. And this message, by the way, has taken me to some of the most unlikely places in the world, and most unlikely places even within Nigeria. I mean, if a presidential aspiration or candidacy takes you to Australia, then you know that you are serious. I've been recently to four cities in Australia, Brisbane, Melbourne, Sydney, and Perth, to talk to Nigerians who left Nigeria behind, but who are finding it very hard to let Nigeria go, or those who Nigeria have refused to let go. I'm saying this, you know, these words are repeating themselves, letting Nigeria, I mean, leaving Nigeria behind, that Nigeria are not letting you go. Because you know that there's no how far, how wild, or how, you know, how you hide. Somehow, the problems that you left behind must find you in the diaspora. And like most of you, I have spent some nineteen years here in the United States of America as well. And I'll tell you that even though it is nice out here, sometimes you can describe it as beautiful, there's just nothing like home. I have been going back to Nigeria frequently in the last three or four years, and, you know, landing in Nigeria, even when you are approaching the airport, you know, can be very depressing, I'll tell you. When you see the brown roofs, when you see unplanned, you know, swathe of land, you know, you see a whole city underling a plane that is not planned, there are no roads, no sewage. And when you land, you know the story too. But there's just something different about being home, you know, that is welcoming, and it makes you feel good, even though it doesn't last for too long, but it's a different place. And what have I reminded of Nigeria today? Two, three days ago, there's no way I could be putting on this jacket. No way. Well, there are people wearing them, you know, actually, a lot of very passionate people in Nigeria. Winter jacket, I don't know how they do it. But I, I see people in Lagos who are like, wearing leather jackets, and I'm like, you know, I really respect them. You know, I have a lot of respect for people who are working around Lagos, leather jackets, twenty-three degrees Celsius, that's like, it is something degrees, uh, far and high. But that's Nigeria, but it's a paradox of the country, and that's what makes Nigeria an interesting place, that you find most of your unlikely things with unlikely people. But if I ask most of you here, you would love to have a country you can go back to, is that correct? You know, it's, it's my conclusion after spending nineteen years, is that, you know, there's a place for, you know, really travelers, there's a place for even abandoning your citizenship, there's a place for seeing the farthest part of the world, there's a place for having fun, living in the nicest places, driving in the nicest cars. But it's also a place called home, and it doesn't matter where else you might be, home is just the best. You know, there's, uh, somebody in those days, we used to have a literature book that has these words that say, east or west, home is the best. So, that is what has been driving the messaging that you have heard from me in the last few months. And for those of you who have been following my travels, my speeches, my engagements and interactions with Nigerians all over the world, and it has nothing to do with Nigerians abroad, it has going to do, it has something to do with Nigerians inside of Nigeria. I have mentioned before, I have been to over thirty states out of the thirty-six states in Nigeria. And one of the things I realized, traveling in Nigeria, are two major things, is that most of the people governing Nigeria don't know the people of Nigeria, and they don't care about them. That's number one. And most of Nigeria, the country called Nigeria, is not governed by anybody. That's true. The country is just there, is on autopilot. People are responsible for how the place is governed, most communities, cities, villages and towns are responsible for construction of their own buildings. They're responsible for the schools that the children go to, they're responsible for sanitation, they are responsible for air, for their own security. In fact, a lot of houses, even in the cities, are local governments by themselves. Considering that you have to provide your own security, you have to provide your own water, you provide your own electricity, you provide school for your children, you are responsible... you provide your own electricity, you provide school for your children, you are responsible for security, even on the streets, that's how Nigeria is. And there are no signs in my thirty-state visits in Nigeria that people are even trying in governments to make life better for Nigerians. And there's nobody who knows the stories more than you do, those of you abroad. You see, you'll be surprised, the moment you get into Nigeria, you know less about Nigeria than when you're outside Nigeria. If you want to know the real happiness in Nigeria, just stay outside. The moment you walk into Nigeria, you will not get the news about Nigeria. Because Nigerians are deaf, they are turned deaf to what is happening. You know, the situation of Nigeria has destroyed the air drums of Nigerians. Or a lot of people have become even unperceived, because there's no certainty of any time that you can tell Nigeria that has not happened to them before. People are walking around dead people, or stepping over dead, it's not new. People are walking around, buildings collapsing around them, it's nothing new. People are going to schools without teachers, they still go there. Workers are going to work without pay, they still go there every day. People go to hospitals, there are no doctors, they don't stop going to the hospitals, hoping that doctors will want to show up in these hospitals. But it's not enough to tell you the story, because you hear that, as are often repeated to Nigerians abroad, we know what is happening because we are the social security department of Nigeria. We are the ones helping out. In fact, we made a finding recently, this was about last week with our team in Nigeria, that apart from oil, the biggest source of revenue into Nigeria is Nigeria, Nigeria diaspora. And it's about to surpass oil now, because we are not selling oil at the rate we used to sell, but we are sending more people outside. So the more people leave the country, the more money we get in terms of revenue from the diaspora. And we have a robust and amazing diaspora community all over the world. And I've been to a few of these places. I've been to Italy, I've been to Spain, Australia, I've been to UK twice, I've been to South Africa. Of course, I've been to several cities in the US. And what is interesting about us is that we are the ones that have become the life wire of a lot of communities where we live around the world. There was a place we went to in Australia, and the people there, I think it was in Perth, kept saying that if they have not seen a Nigerian doctor, they don't trust that they will get the best form of treatment. That is in Australia. Nigerian doctors performing wonders. One woman told me that, oh, I'm not going to go to hospital until my doctor returns back from vacation. And she was asking me, I hope nothing happens to my doctor, because she's on vacation in Nigeria. I said, nothing will happen to your doctor, I said, because I had a lot of kidnapping. It's a lot of, you know, all the bad stories they hear about Nigeria. But the story is the same for all of the professions around the world. Wherever Nigerians are, they're doing very well. Forget about the terrible stories we hear about credit card scams. People who are doing credit card scams are small compared to Nigerians who are performing wonders, you know, all over the world. And we have reached a point where these Nigerians are asking, when is it that we can go home and even support our country? And a lot of people want to go home. In fact, a lot of Nigerians who are abroad want to go home and provide free services at home, but they have not had a country that they can go back to. And it doesn't look like there's any plans to create a country that they can go back to. Because no matter how nice, I would like to describe Nigeria to you, things are not nice at home, I'm not scaring you. Right? I am not scaring you. The country is in shambles. In fact, I have not been to any other country in the last eight months, and I've traveled a little bit within Africa and outside of Africa, that is as terrible as the way Nigeria is being governed. But if you walk into Nigeria today, and you turn on a Nigerian television authority, they will be telling you stories as if Nigeria is so elegant, you start looking out of the window and wondering if you're in Nigeria. The propaganda that the political parties are telling in terms of what they claim is happening in terms of development, you have to constantly be looking out of the window to say, are they talking about Nigeria? You know, it's gotten to a point where they are even going out to steal development projects in other parts of the world, and putting them on Facebook and claiming they are happening in Nigeria. It is how shameless the leaders of Nigeria, we call them our leaders, because they are not our leaders, is how shameless the leaders of Nigeria have become. But there has to be a time in the history of this particular country that we must all take a decision, we must reach a breaking point regarding Nigeria, that says, look, enough is enough. That we cannot continue to walk like an elephant, but eat like an ant. That is where we are right now, ladies and gentlemen, brothers and sisters, and our family out here in the diaspora. We need to join hands together to take our country, Nigeria, back.
Take it back! Action!
And there is no better time, in fact, we have no time on our hands. Because you probably have heard some people saying repeatedly, as if they are programmed to accept defeat, that we need more time. They are saying in their own mind that, well, let's, these feeling, these feeling leaders, they may spend another four years, it's not yet our time. They are going to wait till 2020, that's what people said to us. And they're saying that if we are talking about the development of Nigeria, we should have done what we are doing now yesterday. In fact, the idea is related, the idea of taking back Nigeria is late by almost twenty years because of the work that needs to be done and done immediately to put Nigeria on the path of progress, which is not going to happen with the current set of leaders, who are there only to take care of their own personal interests. I am not going to lie to you that I have anger towards them, because sometimes people say, well, maybe my tone is a little bit aggressive. And I'm saying to them that if you are in Nigeria, if you see Nigeria the condition in which it is now, I don't know how many of you have been home in recent times, and you are not angry, then something is wrong with you. Because everything about Nigeria as it is today should elicit anger from anybody that is referred to as a Nigerian. It doesn't even matter whether you are Nigerian or not, everybody should be angry for and on behalf of Nigerians. And a lot of people are not only angry, they are disappointed in Nigeria and Nigerians because of the condition of Nigeria today. It is the reason we organized ourselves about eight months ago to start a movement, a ticket back movement, which I contribute. Before then, I used to be the publisher of Sahar Reporters, which is a newspaper based online that operated from New York City in the last twelve years. And that newspaper has done a lot of exposes, discussing on a daily basis, exposing on a daily basis, breaking news out of Nigeria. And I've done it so well that it has become a force to reckon with in the newspaper world, in the news world. In fact, if you think what Jim, uh, was it Jim Custer? Custer of CNN did to Trump the other day, it was a big deal. Those are things that I have done before, years ago, when ministers used to come to New York, I would go and hijack the microphone from them and shame them, but these guys have no shame. So I decided that we must take it to the next level, and that was why we started organizing Nigerians all over, and created the first major global movement that blew up rapidly of Nigerians within Nigeria, outside of Nigeria, Nigerians everywhere, to take Nigeria back. And about two and a half months ago, we registered a political party known as the African Action Congress. And that party had a convention recently in Lagos that was massive, over three thousand people attended the convention, mostly young people. And I became a candidate of the party to run as the president of the Federal Republic next year, February, in the election. And the good news to all of us, or for all of us, is that this party has become widely accepted in Nigeria, very, very popular across Nigeria, popular outside of Nigeria. And for the first time in Nigeria, it's a party that has spent the least money but had the most impact. We have not been able to successfully raise up to ten, maybe hundred thousand dollars on GoFundMe, where we raise funds online through crowdfunding. We have only raised, I think, ninety-six thousand dollars as of today. Right? But the political parties against which we have been fighting are parties. One of them, in Portacor, gave each delegate five thousand dollars to vote for them. About three thousand delegates were in Portacor. Abu Bakr, the former vice president of Nigeria, who virtually became the presidential candidate of the People's Democratic Party, as they call it, was in Nigeria, as far as Papa the Civil became. Yes. Or President Muhammad Bouhari, who is leader of the All Progressives Party, also spent billions, they have already spent billions and put aside even more. The All Progressive Party, by the way, is referred to as the All Present Criminals, APC. These guys have money to spend, money that is stolen from our people. But we are just around begging for funds. But within such a short time, ladies and gentlemen, we have become a force to reckon with across Nigeria. We are a nice highway, you know, and as I was going, I think there were trains as well, everything, you know. It's so, why would there not be people who are proud to live in rural areas? If they can find whatever they want, roads, railway, water, electricity? You know, it was the first time, even though I'd been living in America, that I knew that there are two Americas, the rural, very progressive, I mean, progressive inner cities, and very, very conservative. Because what they were saying on radio on my way to, I almost turned back. They didn't live in the America that I was coming from. You know, they had different ideas about America, they were talking about, you know, they were really, really conservative people, you know. I don't know how even the man is here, in Minnesota, especially anything outside of it, you know, in three cities. Those guys are crazy. What they were saying on, on the radio, I was like, I kept looking around, and it was like, I hope these guys don't come and eat me raw, you know. Because they were, they didn't even hide the fact that they were racist on radio. Anyways, but that's America for you. But Nigeria needs to get to that place, when you think about it, we need to fight corruption, we need an economy that works for the people of Nigeria. And people have been shouting that, you know, we need to restructure Nigeria, that is true. But the restructuring of Nigeria that is going to be anchored by an articulate, you know, they are the arm. His first promise, not first, but the most, the most, you know, prominent statement he has made since he started his presidency, presidential aspiration or candidacy was today. He said, I'm going to sell ninety percent of NMC. You know, that is what the urban people call Portacor later. That is, this guy meant business. And if he's selling NMC, he's selling it to articulate, that's all. That was what he did under Abbas Ojo, they sold a lot of things too. Everything they could sell, they sold. But look at the way Nigeria is today. They sold Nigerian airwaves, they sold Nigerian shipping line, they sold roads to themselves, they sold bridges to themselves, they sold schools to themselves. They did so well that while public education was being destroyed, Articul was able to build for himself a university. And the school fees of that university cannot be afforded by an American Nigeria. That's the message in there, is in Yola, and that was the place where I did my MYC. The same thing with Abbas Ojo. So, but trust me, our people with the poverty mentality are embracing the auctioning of their future that is about to happen by calling themselves articulated. But Articul is not the only problem. Even the Baba himself, the lifeless man, is also going to destroy Nigerians. The man has no plan for Nigeria. And they are not pretending about it, he's the most frivolistic, the most nepotistic president ever that we ever had. Today, I was reading on my way here, he has made a series of appointments again, he can't find anybody but his son-in-law. Last week, it was his brother-in-law. The week before, it was daughter, most of his ministers are related to him. They don't care about it, they don't care about the diversity of Nigeria, but that's not even my issue. If a president comes to Nigeria, they can find everybody his house, who can make Nigeria work, so be it. I'm not hung up on the character, and all of the things they design, please, I have to help Nigeria. But when you have an incompetent president, putting more incompetent members of his family to run the country, the country is about to go down. But we also have plans to provide healthcare to our Nigerian people, provide education to Nigerian people, have good control, like I said, think about it. If you are in Minnesota, you could also have hersmen killing farmers. But the reason why it won't happen is because you have ranches. The moment you step outside of here, all the way to middle Minnesota, in fact, middle America as they call it, you find ranches left, right, and center. Do you know that from those ranches, they make fertilizers out of the dung of a cow? They even generate electricity, bio gas from it. It is more the way the world is, but Nigeria, the life of a cow is more important than the life of a Nigerian person because of the lifeless man, Bouhari. So Nigeria must not be doomed to just this two-way backwards. We must embrace a future that will make all of you be hungry and thirsty to return back home. Because let me tell you, as beautiful as it is here, we also must start thinking progressively about the future. It might get to a point, the way America is going, that even if you're a US citizen, they might cancel your citizenship, but then, anybody can do about it. I'm serious, with the way they are going about it, literally, they have never been getting away with it since Trump came into office. Don't overrule the fact that one day you might find... Don't overrule the fact that one day you might find out that everything that you have as documentation may become null and void. Because at the end of the day, it's your country. Even those of you who are citizens who are naturalized, there's a chip by the back of your American passport that says you are from Nigeria. There's no question, there's no question about it. Go to Atlanta. The Homeland Security, they are the culture of people, they know when the Nigerian plane lands. They are looking for indominos. I'm telling you, they don't, they don't mess with you, they pull you aside, did you bring indominos? Arsenal or Yebu, how did you know about indominos? This is Nigerian people now, people always bringing all kinds of things into the US. We are the only people treated that way. I'm serious. Because why, because of the way they see us at home, is the way our leaders treat us. That's the way other people treat us outside. Because they look at you, who is going to defend you? Something happened to me on my way back from Australia, in Dubai. Anytime I carry, you know, hand luggage and it's much, airline will say to you, check it in for free. In Dubai, they ambushed me, they were weighing hand luggage and collecting, they made me pay one hundred and seventy dollars. You know, I've never had to pay for hand luggage, and I've traveled a little bit far and wide. But you know why they do it? Because they know it's Nigeria, they would never try that with an American, because you do it to an American, you are not going to get the business anymore. But they know that Nigerians are no defenders of your interests in their government. If you ask, when you get home, and you go and tell the Nigerian official that this is what they did to me in Dubai, they will ask you, who sent you to Dubai? I'm also not in Dubai. It's, it's a response we get, it's like, it's a programmed response. Because they are not working for you, they don't even understand that there's a sense of protection that must happen to their citizens. Whatever they may find themselves. I mean, imagine people who not even helped process your passport. Why would they care about what happened to you outside the country? You can hardly find, and I've never had luck, I don't know if anyone will ever have it, to call a Nigerian consulate or embassy, and somebody will pick up your phone. It's never happened before. You go to New York, most of them are watching home movies in the offices. They, they have helped you process your passport, they think they have paid you a fee. In fact, the corruption that in Nigeria is also there, it constantly is everywhere you go. They are always, they bring it here. The Nigerian house in New York has the same problem Nigeria has. Half of the building is without electricity. But yes, because they haven't paid their electricity bill. Yes, I, you know, I know this because I live in New York. So, it's just what makes us angry. And it must make all of us angry, but the anger that we have, it's time to channel that anger into something progressive. And the thing that is progressive that we want to do must also be revolutionary. We must do what Nigeria has never done before. One is to vote for a Nigerian leader irrespective of their religious or ethnic affiliation. The era of Zodi should be permanently abandoned. The era of worlds which who do you worship should be permanently discarded. Because they have used those things to divide and deceive Nigerians over the years. We have had very great Christian leaders, the moment they get into office, they don't even know Christ. We have had great Muslim leaders, in fact, we have had fanatical Muslims, the moment they get into office, they don't know Muhammad. We need a Nigerian leader who is going to work for the Nigerian people. Whose only religion is the service to the Nigerian humanity. His only admission is Nigerian person, and not Yoruba, Aosa or Yebu. Because Nigeria has had all the ethnic groups, religious leaders, they don't even remember their people. In fact, what I know about Nigerian leaders is that the moment it is time to steal, they have no electricity. Yes, at that time, there's no Yebu, there's no Aosa, there's no Yoruba. They speak English. This is a lack of corruption in the country. And at that time, they had no problem with the objectives or magnetism to share the money. Even the ones that can't find certificates, suddenly they'll be able to bring that up later us. And calculate what is due to them. Even if there's remaining one liar at home, I can say, hmm, this thing is not complete. That's the kind of leaders that we have. So, our program project, sorry, our manifesto is in ten places and the acronym is P I S A D, which I've tried to describe to you, which is number one, security, power, electricity, infrastructure, anti-corruption, which is a C, economy, restructuring of Nigeria, health, education, agricultural and tourism. Those ten things working together, in the way we are broken it down in our program of action. If you see our manifesto, you'll be surprised. But what is very clear is that even what we are proposing is small compared to what we can do within a short time. Would it not surprise you that in a country known as Morocco, to guess, they just launched a fast-moving train? Yes, the fastest on the continent of Africa. Morocco, of all people, of all countries, sorry, launched with France, the president of France came there. And they are launching the fastest train, I think it's going to be two, three hundred and twenty-seven kilometers per hour. Which means that if you are taking that train from Lagos to Abuja, you can get to Abuja in two hours. By train. Those of you who follow me, you should go and watch a video of me in Lagos, entering the fastest train in the world, which moves at thirteen kilometers per hour on Lagos. And it's the dirtiest thing ever. The windows are blown out, in fact, I don't know how Nigerians take suffering. Because they were inside, they sweating it out, you know, and I'm looking at them like, at what point would they push you to a point of no return? Or how far can the leaders push you before you react? Because even if pigs are kept in those coaches that I entered, the pigs will react. Or the animal rights people, we take the government to court and say, they can't afford for you to be transporting pigs like this. Pigs must have dignity too. But Nigerians are there, they're just very happy. They were asking, we just, I tell, when you come to office, just make sure that it's more frequent, every thirteen. I said, no. They are not using this one when you come to office. We are shutting down the railway system, we, we, we are not using it. They have sworn, they have retired every railway coach that I saw that day. I'm not, we are not making this frequent. It's, it's, it's what it is. So, I just have to let you know that a new, brand-new Nigeria is possible. And that we are desirous of making it happen. All we need from you is your support. And your support can come in various ways. But I want to surprise you, the way I need your support is not the way you think we want it. Some of you think it's about funding, they don't know. I want you to use your economic power to talk to your people at home, to change their ways and change their voting pattern. They should stop voting for fools, they should stop voting for idiots, they should stop voting for criminals, they should stop voting for armed robbers, they should stop voting for biots in the country. And vote for people who can fix the country, so that you also here can rest. So that your life will not longer be about Western Union, or what remits, or Pink Express, or money remittance only. In Australia, after we finish talking, the people who are living in Australia said, they have told their families, if you don't vote for the right person, they are not sending money to you anymore. Yes, people are going to sit up. It might sound like, just try it, call them and say, if you don't, if you vote for Bouhari Atticus, I'm not sending money to you. They'll say, ah, you are not sending money, who do you want us to vote for? Tell us. You are not punishing them, you are just asking them to do the right thing. Because the people who are defending these criminals the most, they don't get anything from them. The most they get from them is the five thousand naira during election day. And after that five thousand naira, you'll never hear from people in government again, because the five thousand naira you collected is money for your road to your school, your hospital paid to you at once. If you divide five thousand naira by four years, how much do you ever get per day? Two-two naira? It's not up to that, four years, five thousand naira, I don't think so. You know, even if it is two-two naira, even if it is five thousand naira per day, is that worth it? So our people also have been to be told the hard truth. And the good news is that it's working. When they were doing the registration of voters, we are calling people to tell people at home that, as a condition for sending money, send me your P B C. A lot of people said, their family members said their P B C. So somehow that all worked, but the next one is, as a condition for sending more money, vote for the right person. And if they do, you discover that you will not need to be sending money as frequently as you send money now. Right? Maybe you'll get to a point that like people in Nigeria can be sending money to America. We have tried, let's change even the cost of remittances for the first time. And it's possible because Nigeria is a blessed country. With all the, with four mineral resources spread around the entire country. With oil, with people, two hundred million people, very resourceful people, very innovative people, very aggressive people, very productive people. But we just have a single problem, leadership. And all we are asking for is for that leadership to change and change forever, starting from next year. February sixteen, twenty nineteen, is the date of the presidential election. A N C?
Take it back!
Take it back!
Action!
And we are presenting the most formidable candidates in that election. And for the person standing in front of you today. A N C?
Take it back!
Take it back!
Action!
We are hoping that when next we appear here in front of you, they will be as the president of the Federal Republic of where. And you'll be proud that you're part of history. Because history is about to be made. Thank you, thank you so much. A N C? A N C? Take it back!
Action!
Thank you, thank you, we're going to have a party there now, we get party downstairs, so don't leave yet. Didn't your heart burn inside of you to hear, can you speak? Oh, don't worry, we'll take questions, we'll take questions, we'll take questions, we'll take questions. We're going to move into a question in time, and we ask you not to leave, we have food downstairs for you. We have to feed our people, right? We don't go places without giving food, and the good stuff must help us think better. Yes, I'm sorry?
Questions downstairs.
Yes, we're going to have personal questions downstairs as well. But we want to engage you here so you can ask questions, please keep it short. This man's time is pretty expensive. But we're going to take two or three questions at a time. And please listen to everyone else who have asked questions or not repeated questions. We can keep it to a minimum of one short sentence. He's very intellectual enough to answer most questions in a convoluted way. So, the mic is ready for you guys here, and then we're going to engage some more downstairs. We're going to have a one-to-one where we can have music and talk. But at the same time, as we're here, we're asking for your support. The computer has said we need economic support, we need people's support. We are the people we've been asking for. So, in any way, anytime you're ready, we know how to help you feel the energy of your, of your contribution. So, we'll take a question, but at the same time, if you feel the energy and the love to want to give something, say, I have a million dollars for you. Why not? That is why we're here. We're not, we're not afraid to say that, I'm not afraid to say that, because I believe in this. And when you believe in something, I, it was, they all kind of get all angry, and kind of goes, says, no one cares what you know until they know how you care. It works for me. If you're talking to me, you want to convince me of something, you have to show me first that you care. Because if you don't, you're wasting the time. Then I don't believe these guys should hurry up. So, I'm going to hurry up. He's going to be going around, I've got a lady, he's going to be going around, taking your questions. And please, let's, 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 let's make it a good question session. Questions, the first, the leader.
Okay, when the situation back on, back there, there's no ballot to go votes, and we don't get elections under the rate, they count it by one, you know, so that's like, how do you do that? How do you fix that? That's the whole question, you know. And the question is, even if you're the next presidential, which like, which you go for, you know, the world will open, I'll vote, I'll try. When can you start to fix the country? Because right now, I've seen Nigeria like is dead and gone, how do we bring it back to life? Because I just came back and it was really difficult.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you very much, sir, for your time. And I sincerely pray that God grant you a good success. Uh, this is my question. Even though we are very few here, but I believe that we go back and spread the gospel to others. Uh, I remember when President Abass Sanjou was president of the country, he was in New York also. And some reporters asked me about the bombing mission there. And what does this say about? And Abass Sanjou said, well, I know who is not going to win, but I'm not going to tell you who is going to. And this is an election that is yet to be conducted. So my question is, what is, what plan do you have regarding the, the bringing of? Thank you, that's two one one for you, sorry.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, my question is this, uh, Mr. Shoré. Uh, because I've been telling my people back home, because I'm tired of Western Union remit, money grab, everything, you know. I know, you know, it's not that, I'm trying to say I send a lot of money, sorry people, but, you know, but the issue is that if you have compassion for people, it's just like the lecture that was delivered to us. If you have this sense of humanity in you, you will be outraged at all these things that you are hearing. I was, uh, recently, I checked on Sahara reporters, and they were, they brought out this like a small video whereby a patient was on, on, was on oxygen for two, three days, and the oxygen ran out. And the hospital just decided to let the patient go, just because And the oxygen ran out and the hospital just decided to let the patient go just because of oxygen. That is ridiculous. We need to, you know, I'm sorry, I just feel so outraged with all those situations. So the question is that, you know, I called some of my people, they say, oh, we don't know him yet. And I also watched some people asking questions, they said, we don't know him, you know. How, what are the things that you are putting in place for people to really know you? Because we are tired of all these old capacities. They need to go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I will answer with your question and that is, part of the reason we are here today is to be able to be known by more people. Uh, I will say that within eight months, the name recognition has grown fantastically. And it is not as if people don't know us. It does happen that they know and love the oppressors more. Otherwise, even when you don't know, you seek the knowledge of what you don't know that can give you deliverance and liberation, right? But Nigerians, some of them, not all of them, are in love with their oppressors. So much that they keep singing and talking and embracing and praising their oppressors. But of course, our job is to reach out to those who don't know. Because it's not just about me now, it's about the political party. As a matter of fact, when the ballot is printed, it doesn't carry my name. It carries the logo of the political party, which is AAC. But of course, people love when they understand who the person is they want to vote for. But guess what? In the history of Nigeria, nobody has traveled within such a short time as widely as we have done of reached as many people as possible who are out there looking for information on how to make Nigeria a better place. But we are here to seek your help and support. So that we can reach out to more people through radio channels, through banners, posters, and all those traditional ways to reach people who are not educated. For those who are mostly educated, they know already and they're embracing and interacting and engaging with us. For those who may not have known, the people in the diaspora are doing a fantastic job. And for this, I would also give our people in diaspora a round of applause. For that great job they are doing of calling people, I know of people who call an average of forty people per day or a week to introduce Shorere to them, to introduce AAC to them, to introduce FISA to them. There's a program of action that will wipe out poverty in Nigeria. So it's a lot of work, but another thing you should also not discounten us is that it's also a strategy by the political parties to keep saying, oh, we don't know him, we don't know him. But when you ask them, what about Sahara reporters? The guy, oh, we know him because we have tossed all of them, the tips, before. With Sahara reporters. I'm just saying, it is not always true that they don't know. But Nigeria should not be doomed to knowing only two people who are thieves in the country, who have stolen their future, who have destroyed their past and are planning to destroy their future. So please help us by supporting us with funds, support us by calling family, people at home, spread the message. And the good news I can report to you as we speak here today is that with the little we have had in terms of resources, the newspapers, even in their regular polling, newspapers are now coming out and saying, oh, if you talk about Buhari article, the top person is Shorere. That counts for something, right? And this was made possible by you. But we have told them that we are number one because something is about to give. And that's what we give. We let everybody know that person who's going to bring about the development that they have been looking for. The better Nigeria, the best Nigeria that they have never seen before. And we'll make that happen as soon as possible. The question about reading, sir. You see, I have covered elections a lot and that means I have covered a lot of big elections. In fact, my first election, the first election that I covered was Sahara reporters. I was able to get the result of the election before the election held. That was the election that brought, yes, I published it. That was the election that brought Yehadwa to office. There was an election that they held, I think after that, in which the ballot papers deliberately did not carry numbers that could have distinguished each other. But they had, all the ballot paper had the same numbers. Nigeria's ability to read must surprise God, you know. They did that one. After that, as we followed them around, the electoral process has improved because of digitalization and of course, technology. That is why they are no longer carrying ballot boxes anymore. The one they are embarking upon now, they no longer tamp out with the results. They do what they all see and buy. They hang around at the ballot, at the polling booths or polling units and they offer cash to people to buy their votes. And whichever party offered the most, in fact, in the case of Ekiti and Oshu State, it got to a point where it became a bazaar right in front of the polling booth there. PDP will give five thousand, APC will say, well, I make it six thousand, PDP will make it seven thousand, APC will make it ten thousand. Right there. But guess what? All of this with visual as well because a lot of Nigerians are wiser now. And the party that had the most money in two thousand and fifteen did not win the election. Which was the ruling party then, People's Democratic Party. So what I want to say as a final answer to that is that an election can only be rigged if the people are willing to be rigged out of their future. If Nigerians determine that they cannot win the election, nobody will be able to rig this election. And we guarantee you that the number of people who are showing interest in this election has never happened before. There are over twelve million new voters that have just joined the voters' row now. And from that, now since we are getting from them, they are angry young people who are ready for death. The highest number of voters a president of Nigeria has ever had won an election with is fifteen million votes, that was Buhari. So if you have twelve million people already, who are waiting on the wings to vote and who are not ready to sell their votes, all we need is just maybe another four million votes and the election will be over. And I can tell you that nobody is out there, the Nigerians we talked to, not many who are planning to vote for these people. They know. Of course, you hear the stupid argument that, eh, you know Shorere is the one that can do it, but where would they get the money to win the election? Where would they get the doctors to rig the election? Where would they get assassins to kill people? Stupid arguments like that. But in the middle of it, there's a lot of political consciousness as well. And part of the reason why we are encouraged is that the diaspora is fully, fully involved in this, in bringing about their own experiences and education and even under frustration and system. And that will not, that will not, that will come for something in this election. You know, there's a lot more that we're planning that it won't make sense to be revealing them here because our enemies are not resting as well. As we are talking to you here, they are watching us all over the world, they are watching in Nigeria, what has Shorere said again today? In fact, it used to be that if I said something, they would go and do it. But now, I'm saying so many things, they can't catch up. So we just keep some of our strategies to ourselves. And sister, welcome back from Mumbai. I hope you brought in all the resources you have. Uh, I understand how you feel. You're right, Nigeria is dead. But what is still living in Nigeria is Nigerian spirit. In fact, what is keeping Nigeria alive are people like you and me, who have not given up on Nigeria. You know, sometimes they'll tell you that, oh, America, US, Britain is giving Nigeria foreign aid. We did a capella show, I think it came out three days ago. America in the last three years only supported Nigeria with seven hundred million dollars. Do you know how much we send more? Fifty billion naira is what we send from every year. Through official channels. When I mean official channels, Western Union, MoneyGram, World Remit, Pink Express, TransferWise. You know, and the most important one, Help Me Take It Home. You know, that's the most powerful money transfer system, all you can do at the airport. If you add everything together, we're probably talking about a hundred billion dollars every month. So we have a stake in that country and you raise the question about where do we start from, where we get in there? I'll tell you, there's a lot of small, small things we can start with that will make Nigeria surprise you. In few months, I will, for the sake of those of you who go from abroad, I will start by putting bulbs at the airport. And that cannot be too expensive to do. We will add toilets that works at the airport. We will remove the costumes that are actually brought at the airport. We will paint the walls at the airport, right? We will light the runway at the airport. That's for those of you who are outside, right? Those are simple, simple things of finishing the highway between Lagos and Lagos, right? Which has been under construction for twenty, twenty years, right? Bringing solar energy to improve on our electricity. A A C? Take him back? Recruiting doctors to man our hospitals, right? Paying workers minimum wage that we can afford, right? And sending our children to school. There are thirteen million kids that are out of school. If we spend a hundred thousand naira each to get them back to school, you will be surprised at how great our education system will start to be. Or, for God's sake, for God's sakes, put roof on those primary schools that only have six blocks. The roofs cannot be too expensive. The question I ask myself when I visit some rich people's homes in Nigeria is, how is it that they have money to get all the bamboo from Italy and you cannot build a primary school with six blocks? A governor will have a mansion that can build five hundred schools, a governor, just one governor. There's a governor in Nigeria that was seen the other day collecting dollars on video. Five million. If you spend five billion dollars to build schools in Kanu, probably they won't be a majority.
Gandola.
Again, yeah, that is Gandola that can do it. They call it Gandola. You understand? Five billion dollars can do fantastic for schools, for even hospitals. But these guys are not interested. They are not. So let's start from the small, small things that can be done in weeks, months. You know, let's grow those crops that can be harvested in six months so that we can have full security. Corn don't last six months to grow anymore. Tomato don't last six months to grow anymore. Grow crops everywhere you can find adequate land. Bring in tractors instead of SUVs for big men so that they can be tilling the land, irrigate the land. These are simple, simple things that can be done. It is part of what is driving me crazy, right? When I go on the highway in Nigeria and you find big traffic and you find out that it's just one small bridge that causes traffic, it can't just be filled overnight. It can be filled overnight. You guys live here where America, I see that all the time, they say, this road is under construction, it will be done in twenty twenty. You get there by twenty nineteen, the thing has been finished. It's as if they deliberately give you a depression that it will last for a long time and be finished, but it don't happen in time. In Nigeria, we don't even need, sometimes it's just to fill the portals. That cannot be difficult to do. But when you have a country where police, we hire somebody to dig the roads so that they can use it to slow down pass drivers to collect bribes. You might think it's a lie. It's not a lie. They deliberately cut off the roads in Nigeria, policemen, so that they can collect bribes. We saw it when we traveled around between Muthaquod and Warring, you know, they call east-west highway. Everywhere you see police, you see a big hitchhiker. And the guy was driving, I said, it's police that dug it up. The policeman that digged the road. Because that's the only way they can collect bribes. So, and most importantly, to have a commander-in-chief of the armed forces that is commanding the armed forces. Not all these generals who are promoting terrorism because of their own personal interests. The reason why Boko Haram is flourishing in Nigeria is because our Nigerians are making a killing out of the prolongation of the war. I've challenged them several times because they know that I don't despise. That's what I do, I report on them. I know all of them, I know how they do their deals. They don't want Boko Haram to end. The day Nigerian army wants Boko Haram to end, it will end. It's the same Nigerian army that ended the war Israel, Lebanon, Liberia, cannot fight common Boko Haram. You are wondering, where is it that Boko Haram is getting arms from and Nigerian army cannot get arms to fight back? So this is the situation, my sister, is it's not as difficult as it makes it sound. You know, when they want to press panic buttons in Nigeria, they tell you that Nigeria is a complex country to govern, right? It's complex. It's multi-ethnic, it's multi-this, it's multi-that, it's multi-complex. It's a lie. The question you ask yourself is that if the system is so complex, why is it so easy to steal from it? It's not complex anything. But you have people who don't know what they are doing, who have no intellect, they have no capacity, they have no capability. You leave a country of two hundred million to them, people for them to govern, they cannot govern it. Someone there cannot run a McDonald's shop and you ask them to govern the country. You are killing yourself and that is this kind of blind alley that Nigerians want to walk back into with this set of leaders again by claiming that, oh, there are only two political parties who can win the election. Who told you there are only two political parties who can win the election? It's not true. They don't even have structures. When we went around, they only have retail outlets for buying and selling elections for intimidation and harassment, assassination of people. Those are no structures. We told them, right? Is it sometimes, you know, we have a lot to say and there will be no time? And sometimes we have plenty of time and there's not much to say. Someday there will be time and there will be a lot, a lot to say. But that will be in the new Nigeria. So let's take a... A A C?
Take him back!
And before we take the next question, I'd like to take a moment to recognize my mother, Madam August. Uh, and I'm gonna ask Prezo because he can talk all day, I'm telling you. Uh, so please keep it short. And the next question, please keep it short. I'm not trying to not take questions, we're just trying to get you to where you need to be and we wanna eat. I'm hungry. And I'm sure he's hungry. Uh, Minnesota Institute of Nigerian Development. Mine. She's, uh, she's the chief of American Ways in the city. But thank you. Would you like to say something, please?
I'm going to serve my coffee. Since we have a little time downstairs.
What's going on, Mike?
A little bit more. Um, it's not up, not up to the sun.
All right, go ahead.
All right, I, you know, when I was, I got this invitation, I think one of your colleagues came to one of my meetings and spoke to us briefly about your mission. And we said, all right, I present my cabinet here to kind of listen in as an organization that represents all Nigeria. I, uh, you know, once then you said that called my attention was that, uh, we're an area where we can no longer talk about ethnic group. Um, mine perhaps is, not perhaps, is actually a religious organization that is not, uh, it's not political, it's not religious. Uh, we, we strive on, uh, believing that we represent all Nigerians in Minnesota. Um, and, and just listening to you tonight, uh, it, it still have a piece of hope, a beginning of light, if you will, uh, to begin to look at Nigeria, especially Nigeria's in that forum. Uh, like you rightly said, um, yes, we're here, but home is home.
That's right.
Uh, we do look to what's happening, uh, and, and what we encourage our people to do here is to, perhaps, just perhaps, if we're able to gather ourselves here, we might just begin to, even if it's just quite this, a change, or impact back there. Um, you know, so, that's really why we're here tonight. I'm hoping at some point we'll have time to talk to you a little bit more, and, and, and let us, also people that are in this room, to know, uh, who we are. Because if you're in this room today, that says to me that you do, most of you reside here instead of Minnesota. All right, so if you're interested in what, uh, what you're saying, what Mr. Shaw is saying, then that says to me, why you're not in mind? Because if you're trying to affect change in Nigeria, perhaps we should gather ourselves here first.
That's right.
So, that's really what I want to say right now.
So, before we take the next set of questions, I'm gonna be the quickest snippet for you real quick. Uh, again, like, uh, we've all said, uh, at the beginning of this program, that we need that of your help. So, a quick snippet on GoFundMe says, I'm sure he talked about it as well. He says, Nigerian people, our goal is to raise two million dollars. We have a clean, transparent, and open model in order to advance our ultimate platform, our election, this upcoming presidency, right? Without interference of godfathers and godmothers, which are, of course, we know that that's what's going on in Nigeria. You know, you have a godmother out there who fund you, and, uh, they extend a favor at the end of the day, or whenever you take offers. But this is not what we are planning, we are planning a clean, uh, fundraising, where you give from your heart. So, this is where I come in before the next set of questions. So, we're gonna start the fundraising right now. I know, we, we've spent a lot of time here listening. Uh, thank you so much for everyone that, uh, been talking to us, thank you for the question, the Q and A session. We have food and refreshment downstairs, but now, my time has come to actually, uh, get money from you folks. So, I need you folks to dip your hand in your pocket, and, uh, let's start raising some money. I see, thank you, mother. She's great writer, that's a check, that's an actionable woman, that's an A A C, please clap for her. We'll be taking your questions, but in the meantime, please consider, dip your hand in your pocket, and, uh- Yes, and this is the last set of questions. And I want to, I want to just let you know that, once he's done here, he's gotta be up at four AM, another night. So, to Chicago, and then after that, Ohio. So, i-if you just write us something, we'll come, like my brother said here, we'll, we'll, uh, we have credit cards as well, we're ready for you to get some credit cards, you can either check, you can give us twenty dollars, a hundred thousand dollars. Not unless it's small, although we don't want deep ones, but we want money that folds, you know? Next question, next question, please, and then, and then we're gonna leave downstairs. So, the next set of questions, I think I have, uh, the next gentleman here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, a round of applause, we have, uh, two hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you, man, thank you. All right, the next question, let me take him there now.
So, my question is, uh, those, that, um, those parties, the media, social media, they're from us. And I've seen there's a lot of awareness coming from young people too, into this present, uh, election cycle. I would have felt that, is there any talks, we need to come into, uh, formidable opposition to be able to round this table? Because I wonder, and also if A A C has been able to go to the looks and crowds, and have, uh, formidable grassroots candidates. Uh, the aspirants for your state are not, my friend, Amigosofa is why, for the spirit of Akoka, we have lots, why I've not seen daily with you. But my point is this, how much of synergy can, are you, you know, coming together within the young people coming together and having the formidable opposition? And how much of candidates have they been able to put down to the grassroots? Because if you have some of the ways in the, the sum of you, and is a strong youth leader there, there will be a great source, great support to your candidates nationally. And also, have we been able to set candidates in all these areas? The five hundred and seventy-seven local governments that can have a strong impact, because it's not going to be easy for you going down, with what you've been doing, maybe in only thirty states under the United States. Maybe it's only in the still characters, there's still a lot of startups that are leaving to reach. So, I'm asking, why are we doing that, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, we have a question here?
My name is Fatima, and I'm also alive, as our president said. When we create a list of things, I'm going to surprise you, we mentioned the possibility of those of us in diaspora to be able to work when we get there. And then another thing is that, uh, what other resources are we using? Because, uh, even if campaigns and other, uh, I'm saying, uh, political parties, I believe that, that the country affords some level of reduction for the candidates, as well as part of, uh, you know, some resources for them to be able to run a very viable company.
Okay, other questions? Do you want to take more questions?
Um, just before the next, uh, if you're writing a check, if you're writing a check, please make it out to Take It Back, please. Also, um, this is the last question, we need to move on. And, uh, we just, Mr. Bogosha, we wanna recognize people, we wanna recognize, this is, uh, five hundred dollars for our deals, give us two hundred dollars. Please give a good round of applause, that's, that's a very good thing. Okay, uh, to GoFundMe app, we also have a, a website you can go to, it's the GoFundMe website. It's GoFundMe dot com forward slash Sowre two thousand and nineteen. And that's spelled G O F N D M E. Okay. G O, that's GoFundMe, period, S C O M, that's dot com, forward slash Sowre, sorry, my accent. That's S O W, no, S O W O R E, two thousand and nineteen, two zero one nine. So, you can make the issue on the spot, and, uh, I have another gentleman calling me for a check. Thank you so very much, sir. Also wanna recognize, Aramasi Adenike Ajayi. Thank you, Mash, so that made a hundred and fifteen dollars, please give him a round of applause. Also, Mr. Wale, may I approach your name? You can see me. So much, thank you so much, a hundred and fifteen. Please know that, that we can, we are going downstairs, we can have a one-on-one time as well, inasmuch as we meet with Jada up there tomorrow morning. So, we still have time, but we know that's a full morning and early, but we have K and A downstairs, so please, 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 don't leave yet, okay? We have our one-on-one, we still have Q and A downstairs. And don't forget that we, there's credit card swipe. We take credit card, we take money order, we take Western Union, just give it, please. We have, we have, we have a swipe here, and you can do it online, this technology has given us the ability to, uh, have ways to do that.
All right, um, I have two questions, I'll make it quick. So, so call May twenty nineteen, you win, you're the new president of Nigeria. Can you kind of tell us how much change do you think you can accomplish within the first, I don't know, hundred days? And then the next years, four years, you have to turn? Second question. And I'm just playing devil's advocate here, because I love the momentum that you're gaining, and the energy is electrifying, that's, you know, your supporters, and one of them, my boy. Um, what if you don't win? What next? Do you have a plan? Because I really want you to lose that, you know, momentum, yeah, that fire, that energy. Um, what is your plan, should you not win? And I'm gonna give it to the last question.
Okay.
Um, you know, Mr. Shaw, all right, so, quick question. When I left the country, it was one dollar to a hundred naira. Uh, today it's, it's a dollar to about two hundred and fifty naira.
I was there like fifty years ago.
Uh, 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 you know, primarily because of that being that we, we consume externally more than we produce internally, and no civilized economy can survive like that. Now, I know you've got a very spastic plan, but could you give us some more specific, um, point of action plan, and how you plan to restore the manufacturing and the agricultural sector in the country?
Thank you. So, let me, uh, start with your question, I'll share your question, and I, you're right. We cannot sustain Nigeria with its now, and, uh, I've said it this, because I know Nigeria produces more to sustain its population of earth. Uh, but a starting point for also go back to producing, not necessarily manufacturing, but productive work producing, because not, you know, when you talk about manufacturing, this is, you know, it's something that didn't like cake, you know, when you talk about the way technology has, uh, taken nations, is electricity. Electricity is the first step for me, for Nigeria to get back to their ability to produce anything, even for the agricultural sector that you're talking about. Without electricity, you can't preserve crops that are, you know, that are harvested, because Nigeria loses almost eighty percent of, uh, its, uh, agricultural products to post-harvest loss, a loss. Because we have no way of preserving things that we produce. Apart from the fact that it's difficult to move them from the farm to the market, because there are no roads. You have no ability to preserve things that you produce, just like you do here. I mean, if you get out of here twelve midnight, and you want to get something fresh from the supermarket, you get. Why? Because somehow, the thing has been preserved to get to you. The vehicles that are bringing them have ability to preserve, they have ability to keep them fresh, whatever you wanted, then you can get whatever you want, because things can move from place to place within a very short time. The other part of it is to deliberately also invest in productivity in the country. For example, today, it's easier for people to get dollars, right? Change the dollars in what they call rand tripping, make their money. Instead, if you give, if you give allocation of forests to people who are manufacturers, they sell it right there, make their profits, and turnover, you know, right there. Because the country is not interested in production. That is why Nigeria, and when I say we are not interested, we are not interested because we are not invested in anything that can make us productive. That is why Nigeria is mostly talking about foreign reserve, right? And what is foreign reserve, as I've described it several times, is a credit card for the rich, or the credits, uh, the credit for the rich. In the sense that when you are importing goods and services into the country, you have to maintain a certain level of reserve outside, so that you can pay for the, so that you can pay for what you're importing, so as to guarantee those imports. And it's most people that import most of, uh, the things that are imported into Nigeria. So, until we start producing local, you're right, we are not going to be able to create an economy that will employ people, that will be able to sustain the population, an agricultural system, or productive, uh, I mean productivity level that can guarantee food security in Nigeria. We don't have all of that now. You won't be surprised that we are still importing toothpicks, toothpicks in twenty eighteen. It's part of the things that are imported. In fact, it was last, I think it was three years ago, when there was a shortage of forests, that they banned the importation of toothpicks into Nigeria. I mean, how can it be difficult to make toothpicks in Nigeria? It's, it's, you know, you see what I'm talking about. So, until, there's also a structured way of looking at all these things. You have governments investing directly and regulating and monitoring what we take into the country versus what we can produce inside the country. We are not making any progress. As to your question regarding hundred days, with due respect, I don't believe in allocating days to governors. Because when you are elected to govern the country, you are not elected to govern on a quarterly basis, hundred days in office. It's part of the archaic way of governance. Why don't you start the first day you start? Start the day you are sworn in to start doing things that are needed to be done. For example, we can declare, I want to declare state of emergency, the education sector, in the health sector, from day one. The policy sector, in the power sector, energy sector. So that the country will take it seriously, that the new sheriff is in town. Yes, and is not waiting for hundred days, because what killed this current regime of Oharin was that they waited six months before they even appointed ministers. So, by the time you appointed the ministers, the country has already entered into recession. Nobody was in charge, and today, nobody is still in charge as far as I'm concerned. That's the problem. When you have a president that don't have a human resources mentality, to appoint people who are capital, we have a brother in the house there, uh, Mark Watupu, that will talk about improvement all the time. You know, in Nigeria, the biggest source of corruption is still handwriting contracts, or handwriting contract. Whereas a lot of these things would have been done technologically. I ask myself all the time, why do universities in Nigeria need a contractor to buy their laptops? Where you can go to a shop across the street. In fact, the university where I teach here, the college where I teach in New York, I buy my laptop from the university store. The university should be selling laptop, everybody who wants a genuine, original laptop should go to the University of Lagos to buy it. Not the University of Lagos asking contractors to go to a KJ, computer building to buy computer for the university. So, there's a lot of things wrong with that. And it's the same thing for a lot of things. As the president of Nigeria, why would I need to give out contracts to buy things that I can buy on Amazon? With due respect, there's nothing to be ashamed of it. If you, the more quantity you order, the bigger, the cheaper it is for you. But in Nigeria, you still go to the contractor, and then the contractor will go to another contractor, and then the other contractor will go to another contractor. Firstly, the thing doesn't get supplied on time. Secondly, the prices of these goods are, or, or high time related. And then finally, they not even supply them on time. And when they do supply, there's something they call supplier remove. As the thing has been supplied, it's also been taken out. So, the system is in a horrible shape because of corruption, greed. You know, as I, I've said repeatedly, Nigeria has spent too much money, too much time, too much resources on the greedy, and has forgotten its needy people. And it is time that we change all of that. So, the last question was, uh, did I answer your second question? I'm talking about a lady friend there, supporter. The question about, the reason I don't wanna ask is I can't even imagine us not winning. That's true. But I will, I will answer that question, I will answer that question. I understand what you're asking, you know, like, what is, what is, what was a plan B, right? Yes, yeah, and plan B is this, plan B is to continue to maintain a revolutionary movement. Because, trust me, there are two things that are needed to happen in Nigeria, as far as I'm concerned this time, there are, a revolution or an election, and whichever one happens first. If the, if the election doesn't satisfy the revolutionary interest of our people, then the revolution will follow the election. Because Nigeria has reached a point where Nigeria, something has to give in Nigeria. And I'm saying this, and it's not a threat, that- And I'm saying this, and it's not a threat, that if the election doesn't satisfy the revolutionary need of our people. A revolution will be the next natural occurrence that will happen in Nigeria, Nigeria cannot escape a revolution. If the election doesn't provide a revolutionary solution to the myriad problems in Nigeria. Because two hundred people are not going to keep waiting in bondage forever, people must break free. You guys have been monitoring what is happening in Ethiopia, right? Whoever thought that the nation of Ethiopia could become a nation that where some revolutionary reforms taking place, arresting generals, arresting former security uh uh leaders in the country who are, who are above the law. The same thing will happen in Nigeria, and they, they cannot escape this, they cannot escape what is about to hit them in Nigeria. Like I said, it's not a threat, it's a process that must come to pass in Nigeria. But it's to continue to build this revolutionary movement, and continue to preach that, you know, the kind of revolutionary change we need until those things are better, conditions that will be met before we can rest. And I can tell you guaranteed, that this is something I've done for thirty years, I've evolved over these years. Starting from the University of Lagos, where I was part of the pro-democracy movement that brought an end to neutral rule. And I will continue until Nigeria finds its feet. Even as president, and I'll say this as, and I say that the cake, I will be an activist president as well. So I'm not just going to be president and be satisfied with being a president. It, it has to take a lot of dimensions, and a lot of them are going to be very, very activist in nature. So I'm not just going to, I'm not looking to win the election as settling down into office and doing what the old people are doing, which is uh, you know, just welcoming visitors, traditional rulers today, religious leaders tomorrow. I won't be doing that with due respect, if you're a traditional ruler, stay in your palace. If you're a religious leader, stay in your place of worship, let the president do his work. My work will be on the road, it will be turning the country into a construction site. And I will be supervised from day and night until Nigeria achieves the best as a nation. That's the promise I'm making to you, you can hold to that promise. Is it possible? Thank you, uh for your question, you were asking about resources that are available in terms of protection for candidates, Zachary, I hear you right. Yes, as a candidate, we are, we're entitled to protection. Uh and actually, we are required, but nobody has given us protection. But if you ask me in my presence about protection, security protection, I've said no. Sometimes it's better to be protected by armed robbers than for police protecting you. I tell you, it's, my son's funny to you, but we had a partisan terror experience in Lagos, where we went to campaign uh through the area of Lagos, and were held up by area boys. But the guy who invited us was one of our candidates for our party, had six mobile policemen armed. Do you know that when the area boys took over, policemen were acting as intermediaries? And somehow, we had to find them something out, find the way to bring them here, I think we had to find themselves. Everybody there said, instead of bringing police, you should have seen the area boys in advance, it would have been better for you. Did you know that when we left the place, they said there was a policeman that told the area boys to go over there? Yeah, they, 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 they eventually found the guy, they gave them some money. They asked me for money, I told them, I'm not the only one who stole money from Nigeria, I don't have the time to give you. I said, if you are sleeping here today, I'll stay here with you, but I don't have money to give you, because I didn't steal, that's a fixed discussion. But the guy who invited us just out of desperation to free us, give them money. If the police and the area boys have shared the money. So I personally don't go to, uh, I don't go with police everywhere. But I'll tell you that some places is difficult without some kind of security protection. But you just have to figure out, it's in your own native intelligence. Uh, so in ensuring your security, but don't rely too much on any security provided by Nigerian government uh for you. Is the people, are your conscience, are the ways, and the best means of protecting yourself, just have a clean conscience. Don't worry too much about the rest. So uh, and they don't provide resources for us to uh campaign. I think, you know, the people who have access to the state treasury are the two major parties. Because uh the People's Democratic Party have governors who steal money and pass on to them. And of course, Wari being the president of Nigeria has limited access to the treasury as well. We are relying on people like you and regular people in Nigeria, apart from, we have a Nigerian account, and and people have been donating into those accounts for us as well. In fact, there are people who are donating on GoFundMe, and also donating through their Naira account in Nigeria. So many of you have Nigerian Naira account as well. So these are wasteful, which we have been raising funds so far, and it's, it's, it's been, it's been great, uh, it's been great. And our goal finally is that, if we can get ten thousand Nigerians across the world, both at home and there in Nigeria, which is a small number, to contribute two hundred dollars each, we get two million dollars. And that amount of money is money enough to finish off these guys. They might have billions, but they're not happy.
In life.
Yes, that's what we have found out, and with little we have, nobody's expecting us to buy them rights. That's the good news, and nobody's expecting us to buy them, you know, Ankara, which is branded clothes that they give to them to, you know, slave them and put their destinies in, in misery. So people just expect us to implement our policies and programs that will keep Nigeria a part of progress, prosperity, and peace. Once again, thank you, I've been told that we have more time, uh we will have more time downstairs, and thanks for thanks to those of you who have made contributions to us, thank you so much.
Take it back, action, um yes, let's go eat.
We have a donation from Mr. Imos Five Way in Yigro, I'm not sure, I don't think he's there. Uh give us a hundred dollars, a round of applause. Another donation, are you watching GoFundMe? Uh another little cash donation from Mr. Le Ola, by the way, I'm very proud of him. In Nigeria, we also have a swipe, in case you want to use your credit card or your debit card to swipe. And again, please, let's go downstairs, we have more time, because I know we are tired, so let's go make fresh outs of downstairs. And we can have a one-on-one session with Mr. Shor again as well. We also have another donation from Mr. Fred, who have una patino for the evening, fifty dollars, a round of applause. And also, uh, the hundred dollars from Osiri organization, Osari organization. And this is, this is a new sheet of three hundred dollars. So we are getting there, we're getting there, so first, you need to dig deeper, dig deeper into the pocket, and uh we can definitely get there, you know, actually, so again, thank you so much, let's proceed downstairs.
So thank you, um so, let's go, before we go, um Mrs. Solusha is one of us, I want to recognize her because she's amazing, and yeah, she's given us the biggest donation tonight. And all the donations about the white bread that we go, um our madam here, she gave us a hundred dollars. Dr. Fatima T. Larson. And now, we have an additional hundred dollars from Mr. Daniel, don't pass, don't pass. Nothing is small, okay, let's move downstairs, let's go eat, let's go listen to music, and let's, let's keep, let's keep it moving.
Thank you so much, you have a, but you're asking more questions.
Thank you so much.
So fifty dollars for Mr. Los, that's a new one, that's a long new one, a round of applause for Mr. Los, fifty dollars. Thank you so much.
Take it back, action. Thank you.
So we're taking pictures, we're also taking checks, there's more pictures.
Let's go eat, let's go eat.
And this will be posted on Facebook, uh on his Facebook, get in the picture, you want to get in the picture, everybody. One.
Why do I have my timer on this?
Two, oh, here.
Do you have a timer too?
No, 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 I'm, you, everybody's looking up, this is the camera right here, this one.
This is really selfie.
Uh.
Okay, I want to.
One, two, three.
Good job.
Let's go eat, guys.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you so much. Hey, you're gonna show them.
I will listen.